We have hit 12 o'clock, exact, perfect timing on your call. We have hit 12 o'clock exactly. This is the work session of August the 2nd in preparation for August the 6th, which is our regular meeting of the Board of Alderman. And we'll call this meeting to order. And we have two things on the agenda. One of this is a presentation. If you recall, we canceled a work session a few weeks ago. And this gentleman was scheduled to be on that work session, so he has come back. This is Casey Robinson from SP Plus. And it is just informational, again, as it relates to parking and parking meters and that sort of thing. So, we're pretty informal, Casey. So if you want to come up, you can introduce yourself, hand out whatever you want to hand out, provide PowerPoint.
Yeah, sure. So, thank you for having me. I'm Casey Robinson, SP Plus. Here you go. I'm a regional manager with our municipal services division.
He's coming around? Okay, sorry.
That's a division of our company that's dedicated solely to operating municipal parking assets. So, on-street parking, city-owned lots and garages. I think I'm running short. And I'm not totally unfamiliar with Starkville. Actually, went to high school in Choctaw County.
Oh, okay.
And graduated from French Camp Academy. And it's funny, because we used to come, you know, being there, coming to Starkville was like going to the big city. You know, you actually had Pizza Hut and Walmart and things like that. So it's kind of funny to be back here for work-related stuff. But again, thanks for having me, and let's get going. So this is a slide we like to use to brag about how old and strong and experienced we are. But there's two key takeaways from this. If you can see, the company's founded in 1929, so been around for 90 years. You think about all the changes in transportation and technology and what things govern, how we do what we do. I think that represents a lot of adaptability of our company to be around that long. Also, that we're a publicly traded company, so we have to comply with, excuse me, Sarbanes Oxley Financial Reporting Standards. That results in much tighter financial controls, all the way from the executive level down to what we put in our standard operating procedures for frontline employees. So, I've worked for public and private parking operators, and the kind of controls that we have in place are on a whole other level. And that's a great thing. Operating in the public sector, when you're managing public assets and funds, you know, much tighter controls there with those funds. So today is really just meant to be a discussion. If you want to interrupt me and ask questions, I'd much rather this be a dialogue than a monologue. But I just kind of wanted to talk about some of the general principles of paid parking. So why paid parking?
Well, if we're going to interrupt, let me interrupt now. You do, are you involved in the on-campus parking? Is that you out there?
SP Plus was involved in that, a different division of our company.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No longer engaged there. I'm not sure why, but...
Okay.
So, paid parking, at the end of the day, is really about getting the different customer groups or parking groups to go where they should be. It's about controlling parking behavior using rates, rules, and regulations. I just made that up, so... You know, so for example, you know, on Main Street here, I was able to pull into a space, but I had to cruise for a minute to find it. Ideally, what you would like is your longer-term parkers, your employees or business owners, parking off the street, whether that's a lot behind buildings or maybe on the peripheral streets like Lampkin or something like that, and not occupying the space that customers want to be able to pull into to go to a restaurant or a bookstore, whatever. So it's really just about, it ends up becoming about a quality-of-life thing and your whole mobility ecosystem, enabling people to get to the places they want to get without having to cruise for available parking. The other sort of a flip side of that is the idea that if I'm cruising around looking for a parking place, then I'm creating traffic congestion too. So that's sort of another aspect of this that people don't really think about. In fact, I have an operation I manage in Manitou Springs, Colorado, and one of their main challenges is traffic congestion caused by people cruising for available parking spaces. So, you know, it's, every town has a different reason for why they might want to institute paid parking or free time-limited parking, whatever that is. I think, you know, what we have to do with you guys is, you know, see where your head is at on that. What do you perceive your issues to be? How can we help you in that department? Secondary objective is, you know, revenue generation, obviously. You can use that money to create benefit districts in the footprint of the program. You could use that money to...
Build a parking garage?
Build a parking garage? Yeah, I mean, you can use it, you can use it in ways to create public buy-in, you know, to the idea of having paid parking. Maybe some of that revenue goes to offset, you know, your shuttle program or whatever. So there's ideas like that where that, it's not just about, it's not just a money grab, but you're creating another revenue stream to improve quality of life. So I want to talk for a minute about the technology we use. I know that you guys were sort of flirting with the idea of single-space meters. But just to talk a minute about what we do, you know, in all of our new operations, the ones we're starting up now, or existing operations where we've, they want to update, it's always operated with multi-space pay stations.
You're saying a kiosk or a hub that you walk to?
Precisely, yeah.
Or not. And I say that, I say that because when I was in Memphis, I didn't have to walk anywhere. I just had an app on my phone.
You beat me to it, but I'm getting there.
That I paid for without having to go to a kiosk.
Exactly. So I'm getting there.
Sorry, okay.
But yeah, so when we use the pay stations, they're all operated with pay-by-license-plate technology. And that's exactly how the apps work too. So people go to the pay station, put in your plate, buy your time, walk away. And I forgot to put it on here, but app, you know, app-based payment is huge, and that's one thing we're really leaning towards in our operations is infrastructure light. So we're not littering the street with a bunch of meter poles and tons of kiosks, strategic placement of the kiosks. And then that kind of pushes people towards the pay-by-app function. Pay-by-app is also pay-by-license-plate. So the flip side of that is you get some pretty serious efficiencies with the enforcement side of things. Paid parking and enforcement are two sides of the same coin. Now that we have everything pay-by-plate, you have probably one enforcement officer here would be in a vehicle that's equipped with license-plate, LPR technology. So they're driving, they're scanning the plate, and it's...
License-plate reader?
Yeah, there's a license-plate, yes. Yeah, there's two cameras on the vehicle. They take like 80 pictures a second. They're capturing plates and they're bouncing that off a credentialing database that's holding the pay-by-app they paid or they didn't pay, or they paid at the pay station with their plate. So they're cruising, thumbs up, thumbs up, unpaid. They pull over, issue a citation. So you just get a whole other world of efficiency when you start with pay-by-plate functionality.
And if you have that, does that not decrease your need to write tickets? Because people have gotten an app or whatever, and because the app that I had reminded me that I was about to expire. And did I want to extend or did I want to, you know, was I leaving?
Exactly. I do think in the long run, it does, it pushes everybody towards a more seamless compliance rather than people trying to skirt the system and receiving citations. So yeah, it becomes about compliance. Any questions on this?
Now, you're just telling me somebody's shopping and you pinged up, you got 15 minutes. Do you want to extend by an hour?
Yes, yes, exactly. And that's one of the complaints we've had is from hairdressers, for example.
You got to turn around and head back out with your hair...
Yeah, exactly. So you're there for two hours getting colored or whatever you're doing, or pedicure or whatever you're doing.
Yeah.
And it rolls on to two hours, and you've now got to go out with your socks on or whatever, and your hair up in curlers and get it taken care of. When in this case, you can just respond that, yes, I'm on another 30 minutes or whatever it is.
No, it's awesome. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Wood, this is downtown merchants. What do they think? And what's their consensus, or is there consensus on what they think about potentially putting any parking meters?
Well, this has been one of those issues with them, because we get complaints from the restaurants, and we then turn around and have concerns from the business owners that we don't want to drive people away. So that's the reason we're, it's just an exploration at this point in time. And they have, Main Street actually met last week, I believe it was, and was going to issue a letter saying that they were supportive of parking in, or metered parking in the Cotton District and in the Midtown area, and they were still evaluating the downtown area. So that's all I know at this point.
But yeah, and just to speak to that, you can kind of separate those user groups. So say, someone wants to go to mug shots, and they're going to be there for an hour and a half versus the parker who's pulling into the bookstore and they're only going to be there for 15 or 20 minutes. You could make it where you get the first 15 minutes free, and then the clock starts ticking.
And that's the beauty of that technology, is you can try and, you can shift all of that depending on the time of day and what's going on and that sort of thing.
Precisely. Yeah, so, and it doesn't have to be blanket across the city. It could be, this block is regulated this way, this, you know, and the signage would communicate that, so...
It's pretty easy to do, and it's easy to change those times.
Absolutely. Super easy.
Probably on an app or a computer, we let Joel or Matt, where are you? Back there.
Yeah, it's super easy to change all that stuff. And you can have it set up to automatically change on the weekends or whatever. So this is just a map of our operations across the country. Everything from, you know, like I said, Manitou Springs, Colorado, which is very similar to here, more tourist-driven rather than university-driven, but similar footprint, similar space count, all the way up to, you know, Dallas, Texas, which I manage, New Orleans. Those are both 4,000-space operations. So if you can imagine this map, and I think it's in the, he's got it open to the page, imagine a line connecting all these operations together. So say we managed the city of Starkville's parking, we're not just doing that in a bubble. It kind of becomes interconnected with all our other operations in that we share information, we share new technology, we share best practices. So that's kind of a synergy that we get from operating all these, you know, multi-sized operations across the country. So these are some similar-size operations we have. I've been harping on Manitou Springs, Beaufort, South Carolina, Decatur. We just got Augusta, Georgia, that we're starting up. They did not have paid parking there at all, so that's another startup from the ground up. It's pay-by-plate with pay stations and a strong focus on pay-by-app, LPR enforced. So really, this is just about, and you guys deciding what you think your challenges are. I mean, literally, every city I go to is a different, they have different objectives, they have different challenges. What problem are you trying to solve by instituting paid parking? So hopefully, we have some time to chat about that. I was trying to kind of run through this, because last time I was here, which was almost exactly a year ago, I ran out of time and we didn't really get to talk. Stakeholder engagement, this is really just us, and we're sort of pre-that right now, but getting the stakeholders together, so for that, you know, it would be this group, business owners, laypeople, the downtown improvement board, to get together and try to come to some kind of consensus on what would be best for Starkville.
Well, and if you go back to, I think it was your original screen, one of the things you said was the downtown, no, not that one, that's the one I talked about, the increased turnover and the relocate downtown employees has been one of the things, because we have a number of offices where employees are parking.
Right.
And they come in early enough that they can get a parking place pretty easily, but then don't move out in time for the lunch crowd.
For me, to come have lunch.
Yeah, for any of us, the rest of us to come have lunch. So that's been, that's been a part of that, which is what I was referencing. And then the other is, you know, the people with, going to be there two, two and a half hours, whatever it is, and don't want to get a ticket, so they come strolling out in whatever condition they're in. So, and some of it is to increase turnover during, particularly during that lunch hour timeline.
Yeah.
When our restaurants are needing to have more than one sitting, if you will.
Absolutely.
So that probably is all, is the goals that I have heard, and others may have heard other things. Anybody else hear anything about it?
For me, it is that business support, to free up enough parking so that we're supporting businesses by having relatively convenient parking. It's never going to be right in front of the door that you want to go to, but, which people want, but can't always have. So that's, that's been the things I've heard. The other thing that concerns people is it's different. And so there's some alarming comments about downtown parking, and I won't do this if we have paid parking, but we can address a lot of that with how we structure our fees.
Right.
So that it is minimal fees if you're just here for a few minutes. If you want to park for six hours, it's going to cost more.
I want to pivot over here to Alderman Vaughn and use your historical knowledge, because I was out of town when they cut the meters off. You know, we used to have meters downtown. When I grew, when I was growing up, there were meters downtown.
When did they go away?
Well, that's where I was going.
I remember that too.
Oh, well, were you in town for that?
We got, I was here.
Well, no, it wasn't that, it was that I didn't know you were in town for that.
No, I mean, I wasn't, we hadn't been, every time I stayed in Mississippi, it was hard.
Okay, so when, do you recall the circumstances under which we cut them down?
No, I don't really.
Interesting. Because I, I mean, I grew up, we were putting nickels and quarters and whatever and turning the thing.
You know what, what they said wasn't that. Downtown started bleeding business off these, putting shops up.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Big parking lots, lots of free parking. Created this incessant town, and at one time, the sales tax structure in Mississippi wasn't as good as it is now, diversion, and it got better. So revenue from other sources got better. There was a time that that was a big, big revenue thing for cities.
Really?
Parking meters, because there wasn't a shopping center anywhere, everybody went downtown, everybody put, got out and put money in there.
Well, I would have guessed that, but I'd rather, I didn't want to guess if there was a reason that we knew for sure, but that would have been my speculation, is that's exactly why.
Yeah, and I've seen that in other places where there was, you know, a historical downtown core, and that sort of died out with suburban sprawl, and then that sprawl hits a point, and that wave flows back down, downtown gets revitalized.
It recycles.
No, you see this, just, just coming here, I was here a year ago, just anecdotally seeing the growth and the density of business and stuff in this area, it's, it's really exploding, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I do have a quick question, and I'm, this is a huge curiosity question. I know about Beaufort. What is, what is Gretna, Louisiana, am?
It's just suburban New Orleans.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the West Bank.
I was looking at their annual, annual revenue, and I'm, and I'm wondering, it's 17,000 or 18,000. I'm just curious as to what their draw was, because I don't know. Okay, just curiosity.
Just West Bank, food, hospital.
It's, it's really actually, it's centered around a small downtown area. There's a courthouse there, so as people go into court. It's a super-small operation.
Okay.
Smaller than this would be.
Yeah, I just, as I said, just, just curious as to, what was it that they had going on that they felt they needed meters? Same kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
So small, yeah, in a courthouse?
A lack of, a lack of available parking.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Any other, any other questions?
I'd say we get a lot of, I get a lot of comments on the location of downtown. Same thing, we're talking about downtown employees and, you know, cordially asking them to park in other places where they can free up parking spots. Second, I would say in this town, even though we talk about apps and a lot of things, I saw that with the Lime Bike app, is you've got generational gaps. So it's nothing for a 15-year-old to walk up there and know how to turn an app on and, or a 17-year-old how to turn an app on, but...
Some of us...
I was going to say, wait a minute. So what we have, you just have, you've got to be cocky and individuals in this town that want to come up there and put the nickels and the dime and the quarters in there. So it's always got to be a cash option at some point.
And that's where the kiosks, they would take coin.
Yeah, just, you know, we think sometimes, younger generation or anybody, just that's tech-savvy, forgets individuals that really don't use a lot of tech.
Yeah.
That, and then the downtown location employees, and then, you know, reading the threads and everything, you've heard a lot of individuals, I'm just going to boycott downtown. I don't necessarily think that. I think that what you have to do is, 15 minutes is probably not a big enough block to come in and do your first initial shopping. There's some people, I mean, a 30 to 45 minute, in my opinion, I don't know about an hour stretch, but give them enough time if they want to come in and grab something to go that they're not feeling rusty to purchase.
Right.
I've had that to individuals that, you know, I do hear a lot of individuals that say that I'm just not going to come downtown, and I don't, I think that may be a scare tactic. I don't think they're going to quit coming down. I'm not saying I'm far against this, I'm just, I'm saying you've got some individuals that say they're going to, they're used to free parking, and so anytime you change anything, they're going to be...
Yeah, I mean, there, there might be a little bit of attrition, but I don't think that it's, I don't think you're going to see a huge boycott. I mean, the, the good news is, is that the footprint of downtown here is small enough that the free parking, like say Lampkin was free, is right there.
Yeah, well, we have two public parking places that are behind each one of the first-row buildings.
Right.
And one of them's behind Starkville Cafe, which is who some of these folks were saying, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be back. But the Starkville Cafe, right there behind it, is, has got public parking that's free. So, you know, how you structure that is critical.
Yeah, and I mean, you can work out, you know, programs where you have couponing options through, through the app from certain restaurants or through the kiosks. You know, you could have this, I don't, I don't know if there's an app or a website related to like your shuttle system, but you know, you could kind of link the parking up with that, so it kind of becomes this whole mobility situation, you know, when, if you, you rolled out the app, you do have, of course, you know, that we always have to provide a cash option. But the good news here is that you have a huge, a huge segment of your users would be tech-savvy people.
And getting more so. I mean, obviously, it's getting more so, so...
I'd say it's a man, this is not a town, this is a college town, so you've got busy weekends, you know, I think we said 37 or 38 weekends a year, you've got game to graduation.
We hope so.
Some type of function on average. But then there's this big block, like summertime, where I can go down there right now and park anywhere I want to, pretty much at any time. So there's some times that I don't have, summertime here at the county town pretty much cut in half, you know, population-wise.
Right.
But they are, they're peak times, I think you'd be better, more beneficial, obviously, on game-day weekends where you want to create high turnover versus...
That's one question I have, does this have to be set in blanket? And we're just always enforced, so there can be times you cut it off or less...
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, you could, you could do, that's all totally controllable.
How is it public? I mean, I used to get on the iPhone, look, see if it's free. But I mean, how do people that don't have, how do they know when we're changing that? That's always a moving thing, you know, if we're changing.
Well, if you, yeah, I mean, you could communicate that through social media, but I mean, if, if they're coming downtown and they're learning about it, they would learn when they go to pay on the app, or if they go up to the machine, the price is going to be displayed. It might say, game-day parking is, you know, $15, and that's good for all day. So that becomes a different price structure for game-day versus, and you could have all that programmed in in advance, you know? That's just an example of how it can operate.
And obviously, you could always change. If it doesn't work, you can change it and do different things.
Absolutely.
The kiosks, I mean, I saw a picture in here, the kiosks, are they, are they, what size, dimension? I mean, I didn't look for dimensions, but...
They're about five feet tall and maybe 18 inches wide, like five by 18 by six.
Not very deep.
Yeah, about that deep.
Yeah, all right.
So what I'm taking away from all of this is that we've not made a decision, and we're just exploring options, and that if we did decide it was something we wanted to do, we'll need to get lots of input, we'll need to structure how we want to handle the rates and what makes sense for us, what helps us accomplish the goals that we're trying to accomplish, which is, again, for me, supporting the downtown business by freeing up some parking so that their customer base can get in. But there's, there's a lot of talking still to be done and, and a lot of people, stakeholders to engage.
Well, we need to assess where in the Cotton District, for example, because there are places that are clearly marked off right now. In fact, Camp, Cotton District-wise, we have explored or talked about a number of things, like taking fellowship, for example, making it a one-way and parallel, adding parallel parking to that. That'd be an area where you could have meter, could have a meter there, right? No reason, no reason you couldn't. Or meter, or meter-type parking. And then down, around Ben 612 and the Cotton District down there, and then along, yeah, Midtown, and then along, also along Russell Street, where there, there's parking elements there that are, that are rather tight. So, you know, there are multiple places, then we could do a test area or not, so it's just, again, it's just a matter of having a little exploratory information available to us, and we can maybe push it a little further and see. Because I do know that the Main Street folks were amenable to, and we're going to send a letter in support of something, looking at something in the Cotton District and in the Midtown area, so...
What's your areas that have the same problems that downtown does, and maybe more so than downtown, in terms of people parking and customers not being able to get into those businesses because of a lack of parking?
Do you, do you think...
And a lack of turnover.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you think that the Cotton District has a different draw than Main Street?
Oh, sure.
Like, could you go pay-by-app only?
Well, and that would be, that's, I was going to say, that that particular area has got your, your college-age student, and would be much more inclined to go through that...
I walked it a couple of times yesterday. I walked from Jefferson to Colonel Muldro. And yeah, I got a real college bar.
You did a, you did a long hike.
It was a walk.
Yeah, I like walking. But, but yeah, I mean, I think you could go, you could probably go pay-by-app only in that area. Maybe have scattered kiosks, but very light infrastructure.
And so what do your kiosks cost? What's your initial investment, if you will, for...
It's in, it's in the budget at the back, but they're...
Okay, I'm sorry.
And no, and so, just so everybody's clear on SP Plus, we're a, we're a management company. We don't sell parking meters, so we're...
Okay, all right.
Like IPS, who you've met with before, they just sell parking meters.
They sell, okay, so y'all are, it's kind of like a onesie-twosie kind of deal.
Yeah, well, it's not an apples-to-apples situation, but yeah. So we, we would come up with your operational plan, we act as consultants, we can procure the equipment and roll that into our pricing for you, so you don't have, there are some startup costs that we can't amortize, but if you're interested in that, we can roll a lot of it into our pricing. But those, the machines we're proposing in here are 60, 6,500 each. And so they're solar-powered with battery backup system.
Okay. And what does your management bring to the table? I mean, if we just went out and bought a bunch of kiosks, what is, what is your, what is your role in all that? What do you do that we couldn't do ourselves?
Well, I mean, like I said before, you know, we, we have a team of experts that this is basically all we do. There's a lot of stuff that's not going to be obvious, like if it were run by your police department, you know, we've seen cities, you know, some cities do do it successfully in-house, but, you know, with us, you know, we're bringing our best practices from all the operations across the country here. We've got economies of scale, economies of experience that save the city money. We displace some of your risk by being insured through SP Plus.
It looks like you'll do accounts collection.
Yeah, there you go.
It sounds like accounts collection for people who have gotten that ticket is part of what you can do.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the pay-by-app providers that we're partnering with a lot right now, there's some literature on this at the back, is Passport. And so that's a pay-by-app company, but they don't just do that. They have a whole suite of enforcement tools, and so they provide the handheld, which all the handhelds, enforcement handhelds are now just phones. So you can issue a citation, that goes to a Bluetooth printer that an enforcement officer's wearing on their belt. That, so the pay-by-app credentialing is automatically updating in their handheld in real time. There's a work order management system through there, so if an enforcement officer recognizes there's a problem with a pay station, that can be logged and routed to a tech to come fix the machine. It's also good for adjudication if somebody says, well, I, I paid, or I didn't pay because the machine was broken, and then they got a ticket. didn't pay 'cause the machine was broken," and then they got a ticket. So, they do first level adjudication, so you don't have to deal with that, and then they do the collections process at the end. So, yeah.
Okay, cool. Any, any other questions? Nothing? Okay, well, Case, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it, and we get to, we get to keep these, right?
Absolutely. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know there'd be so many people, but, yeah.
No, it's okay.
Enjoy the reading.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Come on, man, you know you want this.
I'll read everything.
You already read it. Well, thanks for having me, and, uh, give a shout if y'all need anything.
Okay, we appreciate your, uh, coming and giving us some information.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alright, take care. Alright, we will move on to our agenda. Um, if there's anything that anyone specifically wants to, um, keep off consent, I mean, there's some things that we all know about, um, but if there's anything in particular, um, we have three sets of minutes, which Mr. Latimer, I believe, has blessed.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, any reason not to put those on consent for anybody? No? Okay. Alright, uh, I have no comments that I know of. We have no introductions, to my knowledge. Um, anybody have anything that they know they're gonna wanna make comments about that we can put on there? Okay. Um, the census, census partnership, this, this lady, Magaha, is that correct? Is that how you pronounce it? Okay, she's coming to, um, provide us with information. They are desperately looking for people to work, to be employed. So, if you know anybody who wants that, it's like fourteen dollars an hour. So, um, if y'all know anybody who wants a job, that would be a real good opportunity for them. Um, we're gonna have the second public hearing on amending the, the stormwater ordinance, um, and it's been tweaked a little bit. Mr. Kemp, would you like to give us a little brief summary, please?
I have a copy of the revised ordinance in the packet, and what I tried to do is identify any changes from the initial draft. What I did was underline any additions, and then any omissions that were recommending, we just did a strike through. Um, I won't go back through the entire PowerPoint unless you guys want to.
No, please, I mean.
The main, uh, for the most part, is a very minor, um, revision. Did add some language about some of the definitions, but I think the most substantive, uh, change was about the redevelopment. If you remember back when we talked about, it was probably impractical to reach that seventy percent runoff rate based on existing development. This is, these are like existing sites that are already fully paid. For example, the Burger King is to ask them to go back and try to mitigate some of that flow that has essentially been grandfathered in. Well, as you could see from our analysis, that may not be practical, and may really discourage redevelopment. So, we have, we're recommending to revise that to, to basically bump it back up to ninety-five percent. And we feel like it can go to ninety-five percent relatively easily, just meeting the new landscape ordinance requirements by installing the parking islands and the buffer areas between the properties. Of course, it will require a little bit of design and creativity when they do do their site design, but we feel like it can be achieved within the, within the footprint of those buildings. That essentially is all the, is the major change, and everything else, for the most parts, is saying the same. Like I said, anything, anything revised was underlined, so you can see those.
Well, anything, Chris, from your perspective, the finding, any of that sort of thing?
No, I've looked at it twice and made that final round of provisions between his presentation and this meeting, so it's in good shape legally.
Okay, alright, good to know. Any questions on Mr. Kemp? Okay, alright, thank you. So, we will have our second public hearing on that, and, and while I've got you and we're on it anyway, let's just go ahead and, and talk about the, um, what we, what we did, and I, and I asked Chris if we could list it this way. We have declared it to be a matter of health, safety, and welfare, and making it effective immediately. Now, that requires, if you recall, a unanimous vote, which means it would become effective immediately, wouldn't have to wait thirty days.
Stormwater.
Yes. So, um, if anybody has any issues about that, you know, tell me now, and we can take that language out of there. But I think, given the heightened, um, concerns that we have, and the, um, discussion that we've got going on around town about stormwater, that this would be an appropriate action. So, anyway, anybody thinking on that at all? Okay. Alright, we'll leave it as it is then. Um, third, this will be the third public hearing on the annexation ordinance, and then we will have, under Mayor's Business, those are the two public hearings, and under Mayor's Business, we'll have the, uh, vote on the annexation ordinance, discussion and consideration of. And, let's see, under Board Business, we have the stormwater management, which is where the language for the effective immediately comes in. Chris, there, we're clear that there's only two items required, and that is the declaring it a public safety, health, safety, welfare, and then the unanimous vote, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's, that's unanimous of the, of the sitting of the board members at the, at the?
That's correct.
Table that night?
That's correct.
Alright. Um, consideration of calling for the first, first public hearing on the budget to be held on, at the next, at the recess meeting, so that'll be on the twentieth?
And that just allows Lisa to, um, do the advertising that she needs to do.
Right, right. Any issue recalling, I mean, we've got to do it. So, any issues with calling for it at the, on the twentieth? Okay, alright, so, uh, that, that would be worthy of consent. Uh, consideration of special warranty deed between the city and Garen, that is the action that we took, and that is basically pro forma, is that correct, or just?
It is. The board approved the deal on July eighteenth at that special call meeting, uh, based on the lease agreement that the city had with Garen. So, what this does is just procedurally manifest that sale between the city to Garen for the Highway twelve property.
Okay, well, I'm guessing that because we have a couple of absences to that, probably not put that on consent for the time being. So, someone may wanna add it, so we'll get it at the table. Um, consideration of agreement with government consultants for the revenue bonds. I'm assuming we don't wanna put that one on consent? Okay. Alright, and then we have the airport. Mr. Lincoln wants to travel, so consent for that one, folks, is that okay? And then planning, we have a community director, a development director has an appeal from the decision for Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Anybody wanna hear about that prior to Tuesday?
I know, is that the booking to property on?
Yes, yes. Dr. Kemp, would you like to come give us a little preview so that the board?
Well, if you wanna just wait till the full board's here.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
I wish, look a little bit.
Oh, did you?
You know, I've seen some things, but let's just wait till Tuesday night, let that, let that.
That's fine, that's what I was, no, I was, I was gonna put, okay. Uh, special event request, we know will not go on consent, and we have three, four of those, actually. And then a variance request, so, um, that probably, that also needs to be heard. That's not a public hearing, right?
That's correct, it's just a, just a variance.
Okay.
That, that gets to be heard.
Alright, but that is for the, that is for the subdivision of Starkville Company, so.
We can discuss that, yeah. We're not supposed to discuss that, they are.
We can discuss it, yeah. You wanna discuss it? Sure, go ahead.
That's the same group, just, we voted.
Yes, yes.
Twenty-year versus a hundred-year.
Yes.
Stormwater mitigation.
Yes.
'Cause I don't know, they, maybe, we thought there was some hint of possible litigation, because we've gone through the process to approve this stuff at the point that came there, and, and I like, I like development, but here come, these folks come back, it's less than thirty days, they're coming back, woman, exception from ours.
I think this variance has been in the, been the works for a while. I don't know for sure, but, uh, Dr. Kemp?
Yes.
You wanna, would you like to give us a little bit of information on this variance for the front setback as to why, or, or is Daniel around? Would you prefer he do it?
Um, it is basically, they are proposing this variance to reduce the front twenty-five foot required, uh, to the fifteen, uh, ten-foot, uh, the variances. What they are saying is that by reducing this, they can provide a better look and, uh, public, uh, sidewalk areas. Um, that's what they are, um, actually asking.
It's just aesthetics and a larger yard for the family?
Right.
Is that what I understood?
I don't, structurally and from an estate standpoint, I wouldn't have any problem at all. It's just that, that I think that two of these buildings probably could've been taken out of their capital expenditure, and that, and that holding place for, for stormwater mitigation could've been increased. I don't know, engineer, and every, back there's some, but it could've, that stormwater mitigation could've been increased to, to, what, we're about to pass, which is this hundred-year thing, and, uh, the, and the entertainment, and the entertainment. From what I gather from, from the developer and the front people there, they're not, they don't entertain the idea of doing that. Um, I, I guess, at this point in time, I'm not gonna be against something like that, but it just seems kinda ironic that, that, that they did not look seriously at something that we feel like, or I feel like down the road, we don't have an issue with, um, and not turning water loose when somebody's down the thing, but then we, we are expected to come in and make, um, exceptions to the zone, so they can, you know, increase the aesthetics of their property, the building and stuff, which is fine, but it's just, you know, it's almost, it's almost coming to me, a give and take, and, um, I just, um, I don't kinda just comment anybody.
Okay, alright, well, I appreciate it. Any, any other thoughts on the request? Okay, well, we will take it up on, on Tuesday then. Um, we have claim stock it, which we will not, and then we have advertising for source of supply, which I would think would be good for consent. Um, let's see, HR, we've got authorization to hire for a part-time athletic assistant, um, and that would be for Jared Thornton, and then hiring Javion Mobley as a seasonal maintenance worker. If any of these, authorization to hire Amy Counterman as temporary full-time code enforcement, and then authorization to advertise for civil engineering intern, civil engineer intern, excuse me, advertise for two water treatment operators, and then maintenance workers in sanitation. Um, did we say how many, Mr. Ashford, how many maintenance workers?
Three.
We're gonna need to advertise for three. Do we wanna add that number, or you wanna, is that giving you flexibility, that flexibility that you were talking about?
It gives me a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, alright, and when we say flexibility, it allows him to, uh, interview a number of them, and then keep them on the books, on the books, so to speak, if, if we need to hire more.
This is going on consent.
Well, that's what I wanted to find out, I'm not sure everybody's comfortable with that, so.
Can I ask my standard question?
Of course.
These are all existing positions, we're not creating any new positions with anything we're doing.
Is the second code person an existing, or is that a new?
That's a temporary position while our code enforcement person is there.
I mean, I think we need one, a new decision.
I think we need one, too.
Well, that's part of the budget discussion, so, okay. Alright, uh, then under parks, a facility use agreement, Starkville Academy, Chris, you were, you were good with that?
Yeah, and I need to touch base with Gary when he gets back on the specific insurance for that.
Okay.
But I believe that's been taken care of. I just need to touch base with him.
Okay, so, for the time being, we can put it on consent?
I think so.
If there's an issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we have a grant agreement, which is a traffic safety grant, which is always lovely. Um, and then another grant agreement. Good, we're getting some, getting some help here. Sanitation Department is a transfer of a truck over to, uh, sanitation department's been using this truck for a while. We never did the formal transfer, but now that we've determined that we wanna sell it to, for surplus, um, that's right, and, yeah, advertise for sale, um, then we need to go ahead and make that transfer official. Is that correct, Lisa? Did I put that accurately?
And it includes the purchase of a new truck.
Yes, okay, alright, so, it could be consent. Um, authorization to advertise for bids, advertising for bids, best quote, and then approval of the lowest and best quote for a tree service for removing trees in Pleasant Acres as a part of that project. So, any issues with any of, any of those going on consent? Okay, and we have one item, which is the executive session should be fairly quick. Chris is gonna update us on potential litigation, and aside from that, that will pretty much close us out. Is there anything that anybody did not see or thought they needed to see on the agenda that we don't have on the agenda?
Can, I want to question, castor on these DUI grants and things, anything, language on those that you would see would, would unduly?
No, they're almost all the same, because everybody follows the same grant, this, you know, boilerplate language.
Right.
And it's one of those things where that triggers the money flowing, and so you don't